We're ready, we're gonna call to order, thank you so much for coming. Uh, this is a special meeting, the Point Roberts Committee Advisory Committee is uh, is a special meeting and work session as such. Um, first thing I can just apologize to the paper agenda, my computer broke down and uh, it was supposed to go on the website as required and uh, I hope you all had an opportunity to see it there, but basically the agenda is gonna follow. We're going to call to order now. We're going to have a public session where everybody could have three minutes to speak and then we're gonna move into a work session where we continue our discussion review of the 2072 potential changes. And you're all welcome to stay and we may uh engage in some further discussion, but a work session is largely so that we can work. So we all respect that and we'll take your three minutes and use it um to do the best of your abilities. So, everybody good? Without further ado, public session is open, who would like to go first? Brian, please.
Uh, I'm interested.
You do whatever you like, we're not that formal here.
As long as you can hear me.
We can hear you.
I was part group work of Point Roberts Independent Business Council, um, that's who I'm representing. And we tend to do a few crits and I say to them that click, click on people and start clicking on the issues. And uh, as far as public participation, I tried to participate with your committee last time and we always have a consideration of penalties. And I applied and uh, Wayne Knowles applied and Keith Ladder applied. And they decided it was in the best interest of Point Roberts to appoint Keith Ladder, which is fine, absolutely off. And by the time it was, so from there, I decided my participation in Point Roberts would be with the Dallas Scholars. And I couldn't solve us all people's problems, so I thought, well, at least do what it is and that's get them educated, get them out of here. Uh, they should come back, great, if they don't, at least let it expose to broader opportunities than Point Roberts. Um, and lack of concern about the economic, lack of economic input consideration. I'll try and give you an exact example because we don't have much time, but it's right down the street, that's Fernand Deuphauter's former uh, law property that they go to house on. They went to the planning department with um, a full set of plans, five sets to submit and did submit uh, to have what I agree with by the way. The concept of this corridor is say parking here, walk down this side to the water, look at the shops and and the artists and they live upstairs and they pottery in the main floor or whatever paint or whatever. Then they have one rent that can live there and not have a house over here and a shop over there, they have two properties of rents. So there's five and the planning department and all the other ancillary departments requirement stated. Sidewalk, the only one, Gulf Road. Uh, a fire hydrant that they had to pay for at fifteen grand. A twenty foot setback, so much of the window shopping, useless piece of grass up in front. Six Pop Street parking stalls, which require side yard of your city access, so instead of five yards, that's sort of five feet on each side of your footprint of your property, now you have to have twenty-four feet on one side to accommodate the cars that get into the back. So you've lost that footprint of the house when you're in retail shop because it squeezes it because your property isn't big enough to heat some of the bushes, roosters in order to accommodate that kind of facility. Then your stuff there, which the stuff that is okay there and it's working to this day, um, takes up more of the footprint. Fully sprinkled, all top and down on a two-story building, another fifty grand. By the time we finished with it, they finally started going, what if we build a house? Oh, that's not my idea. He said, I'll be back next day, they came back, they're going to be architect, we must do boss of the plants and file it, file it and now we've got a house. Jay and Garret is going through the same thing, now we've got another house. You have the guys for four corridors, the only opportunity in Point Roberts to have this kind of ambiance, to serve the public and investment oriented with a community parking lot, get down one side, cross the front, go to the beach with the kids, come out the other side, pick up your car here and what do you do on your life? Because we're so special and I'll tell you, special in our case, in my opinion, is negative, not positive. This uh, county is 240,000 people, we're 1,200, 1,300, 1,400. But a half of the subdivision over on the other side had worked for all of them, land work, walked down the sidewalk, looked in the windows, window shop, all the rest of them. We're nice. We've, we've signed a 272, the works of games started on the best interest and it's getting worse. They kept in her, her own, she's been asked to panel, close it down, Lauren Nielsen, if she looking with the way and then force what is sitting in the books. Good saying. I'll say.
Okay. Heck, go ahead Tom.
I also represent the business council. And I brought uh, some copies of uh, an email that was sent out on uh, July, originally July 22nd from Suzanne Bosman at the Planning and Development Services, uh, and sent to Lauren Nielsen, who happens to be a member of the business council, uh, regarding his tenant, uh, Shire, who also happens to be a member of the business council, regarding uh, the property across the street, which I think is 1480. Well, uh, had, had you been aware of this email prior to our publishing it yesterday?
No.
And.
Not me, Leslie.
So you've read it, you've, I'm curious, with all due respect, I mean, this is the community for, for what it is today, is, is it the representation community? Can we have a frank discussion? Where does that, what, what does that tell you? The sentiments from Suzanne Bosman to these business owners and the tenants? That it says, um, it's possible that the R C A C forget something passed this year, but at the rate they're going, it's looking doubtful. That's the senior planner and code enforcement officer who issued the violations. And what is your, what is your response to that?
My response was to contact her after I saw the email and the email that was sent around because I was taking that by the comments here because we haven't yet provided anything walkway to the county and how can they already be judging that we have failed and.
Or indicating that in the.
Yes, and she was somewhat apologetic for the choice of language and her note. Um, and I was concerned though, she reacted to comments that Cliff had brought back, had brought back to the office basically from this meeting.
That was not taken away.
But it wasn't. Uh, the only thing she was reacting to was that P D S does not currently have a final proposal, any proposal, well, they seem correct, but they wanted a final proposal from us and therefore there's nothing on their official docket uh, to, to deal with whatever we're gonna, we will have or would have come forward. So her reaction was based on nothing being on their docket, making it seem unlikely to her, I guess just for extrapolating her, unlikely to get anything to her and therefore if, if we or somebody in the community doesn't get her something, so if the P D S something, that we ask something, then nothing will happen. And so she was sort of going down that chain. So I told her that, you know, all from the beginning, backing, backing up from the February uh, 2020.
The issuance of the moratorium?
Well, the end, the end of the moratorium, so backing up from 20, from February 2020 backwards, that's why we had a group back in, well, February, anyway, February or March, we came to, we said a timeline, instead of we're gonna try to have this completed by August, I go to the, like, August, we were just implementing by August and let P D S get them to review it and getting this gotten on the, on the appropriate docket.
Which will apply because there would be a new council, so.
Or that, that is a cure.
Playing at that time.
Yeah, yeah, that's not a reaction complication to the, to their review and approval processes. We would start on the old one and that's probably, probably, I don't know, I'm not important down there, but, but anyways, that is what she was reacting, she was not reacting to any uh, thing you'd be provided that she thought were either effective or useless or whatever she might, that you want by money to screw from that, not from the email. Or if anything, they, they decided they, they, that all things could done, it was really, as far as I could tell from my fairly big conversation with her, was that because of nothing on the docket, she was saying, there's nothing happening. As far as they can tell officially, there's nothing happening and therefore it seems unlikely anything.
Well, I'm happy to hear that because it certainly, it certainly answers the question that you had a conversation with her, answers the question for me and it was most likely a poor choice of words and maybe speaking a bit out of turn.
Yeah.
And that's acceptable. And one thing I do point out to you is that one thing we did come into visa B law from a week or so ago was that as per 1480, they were required for a lot of permit for uh, you know, conditional use permit application, which also required engineering, stamps and a whole lot of others. And they did that a while back uh, and had it filed and stamped and all that. And then a few weeks ago, six or eight weeks later after that, they received the notice of violation from P D S Suzanne Bosman's office for failure to submit the application.
Application.
After they submitted, so they went back down and showed them the stamp application that they had received the money for and taken in and were totally unaware that they themselves helped with the submitted application stamps filed and paid for. And they were issuing a notice of violation during the moratorium. So with, with an attached file including the other, so, so we're not talking about just a few like this appropriate, we're talking context.
Well, I can't, I, I was asking you for context in your email, I didn't know there was a greater, even greater context of.
Yeah, so we didn't want to publish that because that was, and we were given permission to do it for more and we thought, well, let's just see how this plays out.
Right. So what date were, were, were the exchange between the.
I'd have to get more information.
Months ago or weeks ago?
Months ago or was. Months ago they submitted the application and then a few weeks ago, four or six weeks later, we had first asked.
It's something weird, but I think we asked David to, who was our official liaison, go and talk and say, well, what are you doing, what are you doing? And they went, oh, right, 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 we have this long grid.
The first thing that, is that even issue a notice on that during the moratorium? It just, and they have our rating?
Yeah.
Submit.
So. Kind of information, um, they, when you had the planning assistant here, definitely remember here, when did that Suzanne would come out because he would have gone back and told her, so they could have hoped to maybe how he saw it.
Was the date of Cliff Strong's.
And then she wrote, she wrote this after.
July 28th.
He's been.
July.
Yeah, that was, that was part of what I was asking, that was, I was concerned whether he had.
Is that long? Was that long?
July 28th.
So that was ten days, all the way to later?
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was concerned whether she was reacting to his notice, but she said no, just Mark, maybe she asked Mark if anything was on the, if anything was on the agenda, he said, no, not on the docket, the way they refer to it. And when he, when she ordered, they were talking about the docket, she then, as I say, she took that as a, as a light, and not a hundred percent, I think she did ask for, for something possible to happen again.
I just thought, those are those school slices in such a short period of time, in the light of the reviews ongoing.
Yeah.
Was worth at least letting a lot of people hear and see, so that they say, it's not just, you know, the people, it's, some people are making mistakes, it's costing people great, even on stats and directs, right? And more of those.
I want the act of that, okay. Uh, Cliff was invited here and he got a copy of a purely working, you know, working, working progress document, which listed about 50 questions. And we felt after months of deliberation here in public, trying to get input, looking at the code, talking to Cliff, Cliff saying, well, okay, we'll give you a draft. We said, we'll give you the notes, which is not final draft, just notes. And, and some of our deliberations, so some of it's official in a sense, it's in the list, and some of it is just notes. A lot of questions, because we really, really wanted to hear what you had to say and we learned a lot, okay, about whether it works and doesn't work, how easy it is to do this, how, how hard it is to do that. And, and we have a document that's here that is based upon those discussions and, and Cliff never got to see any kind of a work in progress or a draft document, you know, of our deliberations, he got to see some of them, but it was to get him to think about what we were interested in talking about. We had, what is it, about 50 questions? And I think that the, um, the, you know, you're in the council to understand that it's certainly, I can speak for everybody here, certainly myself, I speak for myself especially. I'm learning here what they say so that we can kind of stitch it out and extract it and decide what might work, because I think we actually do care about what's good for Point Roberts. I do think we're analyzing all the time what's good and, and our proposals are kind of, except for one or two, it was kind of not that controversial, some are, um, and that's for sure, so.
And I would say that I agree with you in that they are not that controversial. It may be that they shouldn't be residing in 2072, they could take shape and be effective in another form. But that's, that's not, there is, there's the uh, existing non-conforming component which can be applied to, and then here. It's not fixed.
Cliff's already said that's the.
It's not fixed, but if they're open to, to executing on that, that's a near term resolution.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think, out of, the thing I got most out of, of Cliff Strong's uh, time here in his answering the questions was the thing that is, is most uh, important to the business council. When I asked him a question about economic impacts values and such, he says, well, that's not what we do. Okay, so it's very clear, and he didn't say it's not important, he didn't dismiss it. He said, that's not what they do, but it's what we all have to do. And in lieu of it, we're doing what they do and that's not going to factor. So it's, it's really just, I don't think it has to be without us. I think Judson was saying, well, let's just start doing our logistics on this. We'll start releasing our data sets. We'll start releasing them now, probably Wednesday next week. First thing is, we'll show you all the different data sets that we're using to gather the data. We'll show you how we pull the data sets. Then we'll show you the analysis on the data sets and then that analysis has to be analytical as per what the existing businesses power. Not about what might come if some bajillionaire drops down in this Trump House conference and says, I'll take that, 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 not that, just the existing. If we focus on that, no, then the analysts could go away all some time because he said so himself. Most important, what I'm asking you to is to enact a successful endeavor based on the Sub Area Plan and the vision of Point Roberts.
Okay, I want to quibble a little bit. Okay, one thing I've been asking, and Brian, for how many years have I been asking for you to do that plan and do the 21? Now, maybe half, okay, so bless you for, but anyway, it's not like we have been asking in the committee and outside the committee for anyone to come up with anything. And then Judson among some other people have done some work, yours may be very definitive and wonderful, it's great, I'll see it.
Just going to interject, two years of efforts by David Gladley with the Port Ellenham State at Olympia level.
Trying to get them.
Trying to get funding for appropriate.
Yeah, because there was one time they said, yes, we'll do it, and David went in there and they kind of said, no, we're not. And the guy that came here said, well, let's.
Don Volker.
I'm sorry?
Sorry about Don Volker.
Yeah, he came here and then, then he went, oh, well, no, that's not what he was telling. His job, David, is to advise us, you know, come together with some crafty stuff that we can live, and he's gonna work with it and then promote it. And he's almost like that direction.
So I, I appreciate what Dave has to do, I have someone aware and we've asked for documentation.
We understand the importance of documents, what I mean by that.
Yeah, no, I did, you know.
But it wasn't available, the opportunity wasn't going to go to us in the short time that we had.
So the answer to your question from the last time I was here, which is, share it with us? We'll start publishing it on the site Wednesday and we'll go on stages. Well, first we'll show and explain the data sets, all of them. It's not just numbers, it's not just ledgers and spreadsheets, a lot of it is social behavior, a lot of it is the way Point Roberts is in its environment, right? Just look at it and figure out what's important. You're gonna overlay that on a copy of your map that you're gonna draw, say, this is what we want where.
Can I make a suggestion though? Okay, for the time being, we really have a time crunch because of the moratorium. So because we've been already advised and you hear like Cliff Strong said, yes, this can be a living document and we can move forward with further changes in the future, I believe this economic development plan that you're making is going to take quite a significant amount of time. So I am suggesting that we continue to move forward with the proposed revisions to do the best we can to clean up the subcodes that impede economic growth, but we have a very large population of protectionists of this, there, there's a lot of people who want 2072 and the document that shall no longer be made protected because it saves Point Roberts from a lot of outside.
I agree with saying, okay, great. So we're putting, we put together the names of the businesses and the people who support the opposition to that. Bring us the names.
Oh, good lord.
You've been asking for input for six months, you don't have names?
Okay, and there was a.
There are a wide consortium.
We do, we do have names. There was a minute from three years ago when we held that town hall meeting here when they first opened up the document that shall no longer be referred to and asked everyone and there were over a hundred people here that night.
Okay, we were up, we were up.
Great.
February 17th, 14th.
Fantastic, so I'm not gonna, so, not gonna.
I'm prepared to do it again.
I'm, I'm.
Actually, that's true for me.
I think.
You know, when she played everybody.
I'm talking about the character plan, Town Hall, revision meeting. And then that group worked for over a year on revising the document. And it just came down to, it was just simpler to fold it all into code and we'll work with it as a living document and start making these revisions. So that's when we moved into revision.
All I'm trying to point out to you, is that if that's what we want, if that's what you chose and pursued, okay, we're not gonna stand, I'm not gonna stand in the way, but we do oppose 2072 and we will be there.
All of it.
All of it. We will be there at county council, we will be there every step of the show why we oppose it now. We'll have the names of the people who support us and the rationale for why in detail now and we're, we'll put it on the website, starting next Wednesday and lay it out. If you can do the same, if you can provide supporting evidence for why you want to keep 2072 and revise it such as you're proposing and you can give us the names of those who support your decision, then it's a good way to go to council because that's where it's gonna end up. I'm just saying, just do what.
We come to this and pass here, say the same thing back and forth, but we want to the next speaker. Thank you, Alison.
Um, the document I received today, I'm highly confused. I thought part of making the changes to 2072 was to increase business, help business and yet I'm noticing that instead there's now changes, instead of it saying Gulf Road, that certain items are not allowed, Gulf Road has been crossed off and it says anywhere in small town commercial. So now instead of 2072, not making, making it so it's less restricted, you actually made it larger. Well, I believe we actually made it less restrictive because small town commercial is gonna, we tried to expand small town commercial to include that part of Taipei that comes down and.
So you added restrictions to all those other properties now that didn't have those restrictions, now all small town commercial by having this reed.
Has those restrictions.
So that's a work in progress? You can acknowledge. It's not final, there's nothing final about it.
Well, that is, is totally out of time, you should be going back to more what the rest of the county has, yes, Point Roberts is a special place, but we shouldn't have all these extra restrictions. And this is absolutely ridiculous that you're now impacting every small town commercial with these ridiculous.
Cliff was very, very clear about one thing, everybody need to hear this.
No.
I, I was here and I heard what he had to say.
But that, that, whatever. Living document needs to keep living because putting those restrictions further into commercial business opportunities in Point Roberts is, is wrong.
Okay, that's very valuable, thank you Ken.
And we look forward to Alison and whatever, she's got two hats on these days, maybe three if I wasn't paying attention, uh, to give us a revision, an idea, what do you do?
Well, they're staying along the.
Hold on, one more thing, what's extremely important, we have to get everybody's head here, is what Cliff said is, as far as this whole thing on the mini storage storage in 1480 and all the policies, okay. And, and with some people here who are dead set against any new mini storage, other people say, without some more, we're just talking larger, again, without new mini storage, we might not be able to sustain a small business economy. So it's a lot of tussle there, but hold on, one thing Cliff said is, whatever you do has to be applicable to everybody, at least say in small town, it has to be. You cannot get into something, which is what any change is in, there's not new something, believe it or not, is one. If we change anything, it has to be applicable to everybody. And you can't just say, we looked at, what if we didn't want any additional mini storage? We have two here for sure, right? Gulf Road and Dunkin' Bears, okay? Um, could you say no addition? He said, no, because it's gotta apply to everybody and there's some pretty important rulings about that on the signs, like, whatever you decide, we can decide things and they can be wacky as some other group, but whatever you decide has to be applicable to everybody in the community or else the laws are valid. So that is a real tussle for us to enact it and going to straight to county code completely, outside this whole thing, I'll explain to you why I think that's not gonna go either, but the thing is, is that that is the, the tussle about golf or golf in small town commercial and that kind of thing, we restrict only golf, we have no restrictions. So there's a few things like that and there's various.
The way you've written this right now.
Yeah.
It wasn't written, it was a question to Cliff, what would happen if? Okay, well, this, here's the way it's, the way it's written is that it would be strictened and then revert to this, well, there are a few things I'm not quite understanding. You have the discussion about uh, conditional uses and removing that, you know, you know, that you have to have a conditional use permit regardless of anywhere in Point Roberts, even in a resort commercial for a hotel, now that's kind of like, nah, maybe you won't delete that. Which Cliff agreed with me and I spoke to Cliff, I said, you realize fucking county in Point Roberts is an oxymoron. For a resort town, we can't have a resort. And he said, absolutely, that needs to go. Now it's like, oh, well, we need to ask Maple Beach first. There's one resort commercial property in Maple Beach which has townhouses on it. The rest of the resort commercial property is up here.
Are you saying they don't want us stripped out? Do you have any conclusion about, I'm asking for information.
What I spoke to Maple Beach Association is that the only piece of property in Maple Beach that is a resort commercial currently now.
Yeah.
Has townhouses on it. So realistically, the likelihood that someone's gonna tear down all those townhouses and build a hotel, not very likely. They may convert those townhouses into like a Bed and Market style, they believe they don't care.
Okay, that's what they have, but, but still, I'm saying, we don't care if someone, that there's a prohibition there, if the prohibition was lifted.
They don't care because the current, there's only one piece of property that has that zoning and it's already developed.
I want to, a lot of you over here haven't gotten this document yet, this is just a draft, it's a lift. Please, go through it, decide what you'd like they had to say, put it in red, see the backlist.
Okay.
This is, we're coming down some backlist. The backlist is, there's a few things there that seem no brainer and there's a lot of, at least a few other things that are quite rare. And so as a community, we have to really deal with the prayer stuff, that's what you guys seem to be talking about, we, we really want to talk about economic issues and what are we really doing and you're very concerned about the writing code and issues and, and we're all concerned about what's good for uh, small town commercial, what can promote it, what can suppress it. Everybody is concerned about that, it's what we do specifically. And if you want, and taking from this time, if you want, I'll, I'll explain why we can't keep with it 2072.
Yeah, but you can't, why are you saying you can't?
Hold on, I don't have.
I'm saying it's a bad idea, it's a podcast.
Obviously, you could do it, you should.
Yeah.
Take it up. I'll explain more.
Okay, Haggie?
So, um, I'm just, this is, we're having a nice conversation, I really appreciate this. And you know, some of my concerns is expanding storage units, I think I've had enough here and I don't want from a junkyard. I think I've had enough here and I don't want from us from junk garbage going in and maybe that's a cheap property. But Allison, I was a bit curious because I remember when I was talking to you about some of these issues. You, you told me that wouldn't it be great if the same rules that applied to Gulf Road also applied to Taiyi?
So, so.
No, I think the setbacks.
So just the setbacks.
Just the setbacks.
Okay.
I don't want to put setback in commercial zone, small town commercial zone.
Maybe I misunderstood because I think it's a good idea to have the rules that are on Gulf to be on Taiyi as well.
And if we have those rules away, where we are right now, yeah.
Well, I, I could, I could talk to you. When I talked to Dennis about that, he, he's actually sort of figured places anyway because of electronics that are now in a lot of the cars. And you can't do most of the stuff anyway. So that type of industry is changing. The concern about the commercial, I do support some of the commercial ideas. I think they're important. Twenty seventy-two is important to me because of some of the setbacks and the means stuff. And we're talking about parking, I think parking was some of the things you guys brought up. And I spent a lot of time on the Gulf Islands and their rules to park in the back as well. Because they try to make it pedestrian friendly and green corridor, pollinator corridor, so many have people walking because we have a lot of people walking here. You don't have cars backing along the road without seeing pedestrians. So to me, and I know those lots we're talking about because they're tiny and they're small and cars get parking at the back, they can't get back here. So it'd be great if there was a way to get a laneway or something. So then the laneway could be shared and you don't have to go around the back park here and walk. Yeah, that's true. And how, or have you designated parking area. But some of my concerns is where, where campus is working is those big blacktop areas that are really pedestrian unfamily, that don't have designated driveways in the green quarter, green pathways, permanent ground, that's what we talked about too. Get them to upset the, the ditch that we talked about. So those are some of my concerns. So twenty seventy-two is important and I really liked your idea when we talked about when we get this comprehensive plan of having this plan. And then if, if, if twenty seventy-two needs to go, have enough that we switch to rather than get rid of twenty seventy-two and have nothing and then work on a plan.
I agree with what you're saying.
Okay.
My thought was a good idea.
I'm here for information.
Yeah.
To come up to speed, I would like to see this committee and that committee work together.
Polar opposites. We're polar.
We're polar opposites.
I disagree with that, right?
We're polar opposites. You should be doing economic before you're even considering.
Well, I'm not agreeing with you.
Why that's impossible for us to do.
Because it doesn't. I don't believe it's impossible.
If it doesn't work economically, it doesn't work, period. So we can do all the planning in the world, like we've been doing for twenty years, what's been developed?
Nothing.
Let me, just before we come back to you, let me just clarify. I disagree that your organization and this organization are polar opposites. We may have a disagreement on the importance of a document, but I think we, both our organizations have at heart our community. And so if there's an opportunity to work together, I for one would welcome it. And I would not like to see the door slammed at the first suggestion.
And to follow up on that, I would say that we are in fact, not in terms of vested interests, but we are in fact polar opposites as bodies, okay? Well, just, just so you're clear, you were established by ordinance and in the ordinance you are answerable to the county executive and the county council. That's the ordinance. That's it, nothing else. Everything else is implied or deferred, okay? The name of the, of the group would, would lead some of the belief that it's answerable to the community. If you were elected, yes, but you're not. We are a legal entity recognized by the state of Washington as a nonprofit corporation. We have a membership and we represent the inner community. So we are polar opposites at that level. If we have a vested interest in shared interest.
If you look at that, I think the more relevant point is that we are just a body assigned collate information and provide it to the county. You're right, we, we may say we don't report to you, we report to the county executive and some of the county council. But that's not, that's an odd way to look at it in a certain way to me. We, we, we will, we will tend to, I believe, tend to be responsible, there's going to be a competing demand. There's going to be three members who are possibly more responsive to the organizations that they are selected by. So the chamber of voters and taxpayers. And then there'll be two of us at this point who are at large and so we don't play, have any, we don't have any predisposition.
Yeah, no, we don't have a predisposition, you can have our own ideas or influence by from the community. But I only see you as one, you're, you as, as the PR, I can see are one member. In actual, that one member of the community.
Yes, yeah.
There's, you know, there's, it could be the tree hunters and it could be the, and the whatevers. And, and those are other members of the community. There could be the ones who don't like any business and the ones who like lots of business. There, there's, but, but we are responsive, we are not legally in a way responsive because we don't, we aren't elected by you and we only report back then. But, but our, our whole reason to exist is to provide relevant input back to the county. I mean, we could, we could choose to ignore, let's, let's say you actually represented ninety percent of the, of the people, property owners and the businesses and the, and those individuals living at Point Roberts. We can choose to ignore that, but that would be sort of stupid, I mean.
And.
I mean, we wouldn't do it, but, but it's, we could choose to do it, but it would just be ridiculous if you, you know, we could just, or just only focus on you and this group and ignore all the people that have different opinions of which that are county, huh?
And we did the most important way for us to agree to work together.
But it's just we are here to get the input and, and if you're.
The most important way for us to agree to work together, which we should.
Yeah.
Is to recognize our differences.
Well, yeah, of course.
And acknowledge.
But it's like, what is the difference?
This came from Ryan Cantfield, who has some experience in economics. Order Canada, order B C, all for business. Okay, and I, I've had the good, good pleasure of working with him and he's been in this community since the early fifties, okay? This is someone who says you've got to sit down and agree on what you disagree with and set it aside. Agree on what you disagree with, so they can define the stuff that is relevant if you do agree with. So if we disagree on twenty seventy-two, it may be that before we even come up with a proposal, we have to set it aside so that we can find what we do agree on. That might change the way we approach twenty seventy-two. Until that happens.
Right, and, and this comes back to, this comes back to the first principle and maybe we can, maybe we can draw back this discussion pretty, pretty soon. But this comes down to one of the first principles that came up when I first got off this body, which is that we are, if I'm almost correct in saying that we aren't rushing in certain sense because there hasn't been groundwork that was, that was laying in previous discussions over the last twenty years. But over the last six months, we had this, to my mind, we're sort of rushing to get a new, some provisions in place because of one particular issue. I mean, there are, there are big issues in this community that you all are concerned about, overall economic development, so. But we are really here to try to, I mean, this is always stipulating to some degree. But we are largely here with a timeline that is basically entirely on March, on fourteen eighty, having a one-year mandatory enforcement. And we could certainly, it would be much more appropriate to, I'm not going to drag our people in a negative sense, but to, to deliberate, to much more deliberately go through this process, have an, have an economic development plan either made by a respective organization here or made by a state, some state body, you know, a part of the government, the county, the state, whoever will do it. That would be, that would be much better for the outcome.
Well, let us help you with that. Let us help you with that near term crunch and offer you this. There's already an inclination from council to extend the moratorium so that you can complete your work in the last time.
Yeah, that would be nice. I did raise that, Susan or Samantha.
Yeah.
Yeah. She clearly said she was not the one off to it. She recognized, we all heard this back then, six months ago, possibly most likely it could be extended.
There's already an inclination within council to do such a thing.
If we were, if we're doing, if they see signs that we're doing something. And we enjoyed that based on what we learned earlier that that meant getting those sound proposals. I mean, and if we end up having to.
You might be able to gain traction with, with that suggestion.
That's all.
Yeah.
Which is, we need to do work together, agreeing to set aside some things that we're going to at each other's store on and say, where is common ground? Let's show them that we found common ground. We get that extension and continue on to work independently on certain things, but work together on other things. That way when we come back to the table, we've got a basket full of goodies for her. And it, and it may surprise many of us as to what we will and will not accept at that point.
Okay, we're going to move on back to Heidi's input, but I'd like to come back to Cliff's.
You're being rhetoric like an utterance. It's just not helpful.
Oh, come on, that's like you and somebody shooting off the lights of Chris a couple of months ago. We all use rhetoric, it's not dealing.
Well, let's, let's try to calm it down and make it better. I think Lynn's very right on this. And we are trying to work together and I think this, this conversation has been very good. And my, my concern, uh, when you guys talk, the independent council, you talk a lot about business and, and not so much as the people that are less into business and, and, and are not that. So I think it would be also nice if you guys could work into your plans that you would like to see to also incorporate the social and the environmental stuff into your ideas as well. Because it would help us understand, you know, work together, that's about working together, right? And not just business.
What would you like for all?
Yes, that, that this is, this is going to be a comprehensive plan. And setting aside twenty seventy-two, okay, but don't cancel it, like that this is all about what's working together. And if you want to have some ideas, great. For Paula's concern with, um, her business, is there opportunity to, to extend the situation so that they can continue, so Paula doesn't have to worry about closing up shop?
This is the first I've heard about the potential extension of the moratorium. You can think of more about that.
It came out, it was, it was mentioned very early on, in fact, when it was first, actually, I think when it was first imposed.
Yes, yeah.
And it might be extendable, one year, especially if you think it was on.
So I think there's opportunity for that.
Changes that might change the situation on that property as an example. But I don't know whether we, to what extent we actually are coming to that conclusion or whether they would, I mean, if we get, I would not be all against, some of us may have a little debate because it's on the primary college agenda. We're not going back and saying, look, we're, we're working on, maybe we're actually going to impose a, a delay on the timeline we're heading on because a group in town had this complex information that we worked and have it, you know, till now. And it'd be much more useful, much more.
Let me just skip right back there.
I don't know how, I don't know what kind of response you'd get as opposed to them giving an extension because we came in with a plan that seemed like it was actually addressed the problem, but it's taking a little bit extra time for us to finalize it or for the county to actually to consider and approve it. That, that, that lasted a matter of, most likely lead to a, to an extension of the moratorium because they would actually see the other fund and they're actually the ones now having it in their court. And they could use a rational.
Because we've already asked and that was a month ago.
Okay, we're still continuing with Heidi's input.
It's annoying here, you're getting a crew of council members, we're going to be nervous about getting up to speak as well.
Yeah, that, that would be one great. Wouldn't it not just take more and ask them for an extension and then us approving it as a community? And recommending it so that, and, and as long as we were making progress?
I think that's a great.
Yeah. And then there's less stress and we can get back to working together. And then.
We're not going to have a nice special meeting next six months.
No.
It isn't just more because they look at, at that with, with John is dying. And they look at us as, okay, you know, you've been at this for fifteen years.
I'm almost done.
Oh, you're still speaking, okay.
Yeah, just almost.
You're really speaking.
Yeah, but the whole other thing I think this could help, and I think it came from you guys and Allison as well, is getting, so that Pratt is all at large. And, and I think that would actually help with this other situation. And, and I don't know if you guys have got that on your agenda.
I don't agree with that at all.
I, I would like to see that.
I don't agree with that at all.
Well, you don't have to, you don't have to give a knock.
It's not on today's agenda, we'll take this.
No, and then you just, I think it messes.
I think that bringing the ideas of the chamber of commerce and bringing the ideas of the taxpayers who don't have a voice because they don't have a hope and bringing the ideas of the voters association to this committee is a brilliant.
Can I speak to that? I, I'd like to speak to that. So as a community member, if there's a person that's a special interest in the Pratt, I can't vote them in or out and it's a hundred dollars to join, uh, in the chamber. And it's restrictive, uh, in that way. So the, the chamber is, is definitely a, a special interest. The voters, uh, as well as well the taxpayers. The voters, uh, semi-facets of the community can't join them. So again, the special, so we're leaving a huge loss of the community out for two members of Pratt. Whereas if we can all vote in, all the at large, then, then the Pratt is accountable to the whole community. And if there's things going sideways, we can vote in and out just like a normal, uh, government.
Okay, thank you, your suggestions have been noted. We're not talking about elections today, we're talking about twenty seventy-two.
Thanks. Tara, I'm not.
No, just.
Oh, okay, I can see that.
Well, I'll be quick. So along the dovetails, what we're saying here, that, uh, get the moratorium, stay it. In my opinion, this whole thing has gone more rocky than it had to because we haven't been going through the vision process and the economic development process, which I was a proponent of the whole time. So if this, if this thing is going to continue this twenty seventy-two that I think silently, we should begin the vision, the economic development part of it, um, at the same time.
Okay, sounds like that's what's happening.
So what we should, how do you say, prioritize that, not just like, this is what we're doing, you guys play over there. It should be brought, brought in together and we should go ahead on all cylinders. And I think that if we do that, then I don't see why people should disagree because we'll all be part of that mission. And you're likely to get that extension on the moratorium. And, oh yeah, and get an extension on the moratorium because, um, we're all now working together as a community, um, for the first time.
Okay.
So we got the extension of the moratorium, get the vision, get the economic development part.
Better go back to Kelly, who's waiting.
Hey, I'm actually no problem, this is the first week I've been able to get into. I don't have a business here, I'm an eighteen year resident, I was in church still. Um, I like that a few topics working together. There's my, so I'm still banking the groundwork down and I've heard it to me is an inherent contradiction of what I understand. So you were saying earlier that the courts have said any law that applies to one would have to apply to the whole group. So we get into the commercial zone. Well, by definition then, is it twenty seventy-two an invalid piece of legislature? You haven't got a client.
No, that's what, when you have something, when you have something in place, in a, like, so in the example of this, uh, small town commercial district, you can't treat, and, and make decisions about what, there are decisions, there are rules in place of what can happen in this corner. You can't then, after the fact, change that and say, well, we'll, we'll turn two violations into being okay, but, but, but then nobody else in this district will do that. Once you, once you open, if you open the door by making a change, for example, it said you can have, uh, vehicle storage on a, on property, on a property, then you said you could have, if everyone lost a page, I mean, I think they'd do it based on other consideration. Assuming that, you know, they're on.
And then this is, then there's a near term existing clause which can remedy it for a short term, which is the existing.
Well, the only thing existing non-conformity, you can predate the.
That's right.
The rule, you can't be a post, you can't do that, an absolute fact, non-conformity, you're under a violation.
I just want to say, very specific, okay? I would say today, we didn't have the Gulf versus small town, some of it versus two oh four, I could have just called. I would say that it's not permitted in the future, that was a future thing, not an existing thing. Because they're saying the businesses in the Gulf are different than western small town commercial. Now, twenty seventy-two is a district and so we have, we have zones, if you will, within districts, lots of zones. And same with Waukegan County, every state has law of this. The thing is, is that you can discriminate between zones, that's what the law is, but you can still discriminate within a zone. So really, if we're saying no cemeteries, we have to say there's no cemeteries in the rest of small town more. Just to pick on something, I guess, nobody really was worried about cemetery. But we have a nice cemetery, not, not full. So, um, you know, that is a real important distinction to understand. I, like I said, I don't think the Gulf exemption would have come through if it was today. There is, I'm just saying Cliff and the P D S want their current. It might, but you know, it could be challenged and that's what I'm saying. Anyway, Cliff is saying it's got to be uniform. If you want to ban all mini storage, like, pick on that for a second, you can't say no additional mini storage. How is that fair to, um, new owners? Let's say that the two mini starters we have, chain owners, like Dennis and chain owners, that kind of changes things a little bit. And the new owners can, can, maybe don't have the same rights as the existing owners. That can happen unless it's in the zoning. That can happen unless it's in the zoning. So you have to be careful about all that stuff. And I'm very conscious and worried about either overstepping or understepping. And I'm very conscious that what we're trying to do already is fix some things that are either stupid or obsolete.
Okay, yeah, I've got it. We're going to go to the last comment, Bennett, because we have a work session. We've been doing an hour of public session. Okay, well, Bennett is first, so let's go Bennett, then we have the discussion, get some work.
So there's no guarantee that they won't offer an extension, correct?
We have no guarantee that they will offer an extension.
So basically, if there's no extension, Pam loses her business, Doug has to move. Everything goes to hell and a mess. It goes to, it goes crazy, everything goes wrong at that point in time, correct?
Yeah.
So the only thing you can do, and you can go for an extension and try and do what you're talking about. There's no guarantee about that. So you really have to have a whole process. They have to continue doing what they're doing and fixing 2072. And if you go for an extension, then maybe you can do additional things. But without going for this, everything goes wrong. So they have to continue to do what they're doing and try and fix what they can with the process that they're doing right now. And that's, you don't want to, you don't want to roll the dice deal and possibly lose your business deal. That's what you would be doing if they don't offer an extension.
And I take what you're saying as actually very clear. And I think that, keep that in mind, there need to be two tribes. Because if they ask for an extension, they get resistance. And they get further obfuscation from them about their, where they're at in their process. It may be that the only way to save them is to make you go away with enough support.
Or to keep 2072 and do the modifications they're talking about.
But the modification they're talking about leaves it the way it is and extends it to tidy. According to the document, we leave that alone, that, I mean, that was just a question. Which is what we, or can we leave the wording the way it was along Gulf Road? And when we get to the work session, we're all going to decide which of those two language choices.
But that still doesn't fix the problem that you discussed.
Hmm, correct. That's what my question. I just think going back to something that is, you know, not even a fundamental issue.
Quick comment, okay, you want, maybe you get a moratorium, okay. Having this committee produce as quickly as we can a draft, a work in progress, not a final, not saying county council approved it, but getting that in company buys us gravitas with them. Okay, you guys are really working, you're really applying. That does not mean two weeks or a month later, we don't keep working on it. But they've got nothing. We have a million meetings and lots of notes, and that's all good. But they haven't gotten.
Because they asked us not to peace kneeling.
Right, right.
They specifically said, work hard, give us something altogether, no peace kneeling.
And we could do that soon, but for stall, as long as everyone knows it's a draft and we're still working, that might be enough evidence to say we can extend the moratorium. Because you guys are delivering something. Well, continue on with your work session.
Continuing on, Pat?
I'll make a comment, Pat.
Having an extension on the moratorium means almost nothing to me. And I'll tell you why. Because if you've worked seven years on a business, if you've become a neighborhood icon, and somebody says, you're out of business February 6th, so long, chump, that five year lease you got, that's no good. All your work, that's gone. Your dream, that's not a dream story, that's gone, February 6th. Oh, but you know what? We get a pipe for an extension so you could suffer for another year thinking that your business is going to be gone. You know, I don't even know what to buy. I don't know how much to buy. I don't know what it's going to look like. Is that fair? Do any of you live a life where you don't know what your life's going to look like in six months? No, you all have.
Well, that's time for justice. Me too. So that's, are you making your best continuing working on 2072?
No, I'm not. And here, I want the most expedient result for this. And I want the focus to be really, really hard on who has been hurt. TSB, their business was destroyed, cut in half by having to move a container where they could have mastered, they could have found a tree surround.
I thought you were an opponent to the Freedom Towers.
An opponent for them?
No, opponent, you opposed them.
Yes.
Okay, you know, the 2072, was it largely a?
Yes, no, I understand that. So I would want to.
The county approved the Freedom Towers. The county approved it, and they should have paid for it.
I agree.
And nobody pushed back.
I mean, this is about the towers. This is about people who have been personally deeply hurt. Christie, the parcel service, had to remove her container. When they have to remove those containers, those containers are what house their pallets for their corporate customers. When that's gone, it's gone and half their business is gone. You have hurt those people. The county hurt those people. The county hurt lobbying. The county hurt best RB. The county has.
I want to know how 2072 affected those people.
It is the overlaid small town commercial. Anything that relates to any of these businesses being hurt, small town commercial, is 20072 related, period, full stop. But then you fixed any of the bumps, I'm about to say something after this. It's also, because it's our only chance for local government, let me keep talking. In this current proposal, this draft, this work in progress, okay, we have said two things. One is businesses can have two containers, and homes can have two 200 square foot. We propose that. So that's going to take away some credit. Now, that will real effectively help the office. So regarding, that just happened, we're just doing math.
It had discussion.
Right, everything is in discussion. And, but that is a proposal that's pumped in. If that would help TSB, I guess, I'm not too sure why TSB couldn't build a building around 250 square feet like Shell did, that whole building, or whatever, as part of their storage. Try it, try it.
They need to come and talk.
Try it like Jeff Palenier did. You know, when he was having. Try building.
I heard about that at the beginning of the meeting.
Are you trying to store it in the opposite zone? Anything, don't build anything. Yeah, yeah, I agree. It's a mess.
I just want, I just want to say that we're working on it.
Yeah, I think it works.
Whether it is, whether it is eliminating it or altering it, it needs to be really high for focus on people who have been one of this community, the people who have been.
But what we're looking at is that is almost all we've been doing. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. But I think from my perspective, I might be lowering my risk. And another perspective is that we are, we are, we're using people who live here, want to live here, because it's point rockers. Now, it may be, maybe it affects you and Lauren and the people who are parking on Lauren's property. But I'm not, I personally am not looking to throw out the baby with the bathwater. Maybe I am like throwing the baby, I can keep the bathwater, or vice versa, I don't know. I mean, we can't, we can't make a change, we can't make a change. But there are changes we can make that would be good for you and good for Lauren, maybe good for TSB, that might be really bad for the community as a whole. That may not be true, I'm just saying that it's possible. We can't just, we can't just make a proposal that changes the thing that's causing the problem right now without looking at the impact on the community as a whole.
No, I understand that.
So, so it.
But you don't understand, we have no businesses. We're not discussing a lake. We're discussing a town that has no businesses. I'm the last business and I'm getting out of there, so.
Getting any more business.
No, it's just.
You don't want it.
So, that's much, Ryan, stop making us a personal attack.
I'm really mad about that.
That would be lovely, but I don't have time to spit. I'm out. Would you like to pack up your pelvis and wipe your mouth when you spit there?
I've heard very young, I'm answering. So you need, your point of view, why Lauren would kick you out, I don't understand.
Yeah, I think that's part of 2072.
Um, because it's, what I understand about it, because I'm legitimate, I don't get all the information, right? So that is one part of it. What I understood is that I was kind of collateral damage on a 2072 attack of that car where they didn't want the potty wagons and the stored vehicles and stored containers and all of that. While they were back there sniffing around, they also noticed that Christie had a fiberglass overhang over her porch that made out of two two-by-fours and some plastic that was not permitted and had to be written down. And that our front porch needs to be ripped apart to see if it was earth by say. And our building was only zoned and permitted for our single use, and that was for.
That's a key.
So it's not really, I don't think, a 2072 issue as much as it is a permit use permit issue, which is.
It's both, actually, I mean, here, it's both.
It is both.
The 2072 part is about the equipment, Gulf Road, yada, yada, 204.
They were telling, no, not my business, but they were telling me that I was part of that. And that February 6th I could be out.
But the issue is, for your, for your business issue, your lease issue is that the building isn't supposed to have a work on business in it?
So it's a permitting issue, not a, this is a building code issue. That is a, that is a permit. Your problem is a use of building permit issue.
Same, so I mean, Rockinee wanted to move in there and they found out the way that they built it, it wasn't compliant. Even though it's in the business district, they had to do a whole bunch of work basically to even come up to code rating.
But something is, Lauren could be requesting, just put a stamp on it. It looks like it could damage.
Yeah, he could change his permit.
Or that building.
Multi-use.
Well, he hasn't turned in, apparently, that's a big issue.
But it's not a 2072 issue.
No, so I don't know why I'm tied into this February 6th moratorium.
Please don't sign any petitions that say one sentence about, you know, 20, because somebody has told you that 2072 is the root of your problem.
No, it isn't the root of my problem. But had they not been there sniffing around, they would not have noticed the state was there. They had their money for 27 years as a whole of use story at least, you know? So there you go, I'm collateral damage.
And what's the point for that?
Yeah.
That's not what we're here for.
I'm very sorry that we're in Waukegan County. I'm very sorry. And they make me sorry every single day with some common bullshit that they do here all the time. You know, tearing down our parks and kicking out our businesses. What I've seen in three years of being here is that we're getting less and less and less of everything, and there are people here who love that. Because they live in Vancouver and they have all the entertainment that they want. They have, they got their fireworks, they got all their fun stuff, they've got everything. And they just want a nice little bedroom to come home and sleep in. But we live here, we're here all day, every day.
Those are also your customers, don't mind them.
Oh, yeah, really, she, and really, by law, we're supposed to stick to topics, so we're going to move on.
Exactly.
I did it for you.
Anyone have a comment?
I have one, any more questions? So you were commenting, I thought 2072 related to commercial district only, and you commented.
Point rockers.
Point rockers.
All point rockers, yeah.
Okay, that's going to be my question, because you're not now allowing the two 200 square foot applying to residential.
Oh, that's your question.
So residential issues are in scope?
Of 2072.
Okay.
They're not in the scope of everything this committee does.
Right.
Like, even this building permits, that's different. But you should, I must say, it's, I know Heidi said a hundred times, you get a second, you're a container, or a unit here. Is 2072 is our only, legally, if you read it, our only governmental connection to the government, which is Waukegan County, Waukegan Council, and all that. Without that, you've eliminated naturally 2072, you would all be at the head of the rest of Waukegan County the way they think. This is right or wrong, only committed, that is legally able to change these things. And they are listening and will do it within the reasonable range.
Suggest change.
Suggest change, right, advisor. But we're the only ones who can do that. No matter what our friends here are saying about their small business council, they can go and they can do lawsuits, who knows what they can do. But it's not a free thing. And I was just advised by someone who really knows this stuff, John, myself, he said, no way are we going to get 2072. We could not, that obvious.
Well, unless they got the unconditional approval of everybody in the community.
It would be incredible, it'd be harder than what we're.
They are bad enough in 2017.
I'm still saying it.
Yes, they're bad enough in 2017.
Yes, all the time.
And they're giving incorrect information, huh?
That's, we have, we have experience with that, that's happened in the past.
Obviously, they're relying on it, it's like officially off the.
Yeah, so you're saying you're going to have fewer meetings, so if there is some.
We're going to have meetings on this issue.
Yeah. So what's the proper form for residential issues?
We have a third Thursday every month are our regular meetings, which we attend to all things community related. But this issue needed some additional attention, so we scheduled six special meetings in the past, six, I think eight special meetings in the last.
Yeah, there'll be time to match it yet, yeah.
So, third, fifth day every month.
Yeah.
All are welcome at six o'clock right here.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, so let's just start from Kelly and, I can't remember her last name, but. Kelly, which last name do you have?
Ryan or Ryan and Anne?
Thank you. Okay, so with Cliff's notes and moving straight into the very beginning, I think that, I mean, at this point, we're just going to try and, we're just going to try and.
Well, actually, the changes in here are, just go and find those old note cards.
Yeah.
You can see this, no, my thing, which case is.
But if we, so let's start at the beginning. Do we agree that this is worth our time to continue to try and make these revisions? Or are we just banging our head against the wall?
Well, I think what we can do, if we jump to the topic of the mic that was debated somewhere out earlier today. I've heard of that, we've been talking about that. If we don't, if we just go to the group where we were going before, we were going to propose various changes, some to just clarify, I don't think, some to make some, propose changes. But I think we're not going to address the 2072 issue at all, and more, because we lost our whole issue. So if we just do that, we won't help with Lauren's problem, nothing would help me directly on Pam's problem, but that's a division. And so we would be advancing the law in terms of this enforcement action, whether you're proposing an extension on the moratorium. It wouldn't be actually moving that way. But with this new language, I don't, I'm not sure what I hear, but from where Cliff knows, but if we, if we discuss that new particular keys, then it's, it might actually resolve the problem, whether it doesn't in a way that is acceptable to anybody.
Yeah, it's not going to resolve that the building is non-compliant. They could say it's not compliant because you're okay with it, they do that, I mean, ask Allison.
Yeah.
So Lauren, if, if, Jackson says Lauren is not actually compliant. He's letting all minions, his friends, you know, including us, do the fighting, yes, but that, yes, well, he lost the authority. But anyway, this would help everybody else, because the problem begins. The core issue, 204, mini-stores, whatever. The core issue is whatever we decide, we're banning or allow, eligible or not, we have to allow for at least all of one zone. We can't say the all for, and Kenny was all upset about.
Except that it already says Gulf Road, and so as Unit said earlier, if we don't change it, it's okay.
You leave it, right.
So clearly, that was what Kenny was upset about, we should leave it at only Gulf Road and not call it commercial. Because that is more restrictive, and I have to agree with him on that point.
But that means the rest is all that commercial is on, on mini-stores where we are now. So we're trying to get, unless we put it as conditional.
Well, that's considered, he doesn't want it to be more restrictive, so maybe they do want a mini storage up there. But I wouldn't want it on tiny.
I think they're just reacting to making things more expansive when they didn't think they needed that.
They want knockouts.
Yeah, that's a little correct. So I like the baby, and I added two buildings, premises, and set that on the streets. And then, yeah, that's a whole.
This is, this is new DGE.
That's just what the DGE, that's the new DGE. So you're proposing, Dave, I can't, if you are proposing to put this not in the, it's not in this, like.
I want to find the way originally.
It's not really a standard for permitted uses in all of our business. I think they're just.
So I'm looking for, oh, so there is no O52, he's complaining.
Right, when the menu, no, that's not false.
So we're, but we're in O50.
That's what I have, I have pretty first.
O50, there, over here, permitted uses, okay, back to here. Okay, so currently, all permitted uses are permitted, how about that? Except this.
If you want any conditional, you have to go down.
So then adding in the small town commercial, license business related storage containers, inchores, uncompliant units, comma. units, comma, provided such storage units are screened from view per standard walking screening rules and setbacks on the street by 50 feet.
So I make an error.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Then, you know, nurse to child access to her business, unless approved or not, I think that's fine.
So that second sentence that Dave created would help TSB, that they could get authorized to have
For two containers
But it has to be screened.
And potentially permit for more of them.
Maybe, but they'll have, they'll have to enforce, they'll have to And what I want, you know, what I added is screen for view, and I added per standard walking screening rule.
Yeah, that I like.
Pretty innocuous, yeah. They have good rules, you know, and, yeah. So, and then I added 50 foot, which is a whole new thing, but
But we've talked about the 50 foot setback in 70s, and there was quite a bit of input that a lot of people really liked that. Except for Brian's rebuttal there, where he said, you know, what's the 50 foot setback really prohibits that fishy village kind of, you know, thing that everybody kind of No, I know, you know, this storefronts on the street with, you know, people walking up and down the street.
Well, it only, except it only applies to, to this kind of thing. In this, in this particular video
Oh, it only applies to
Well, I mean, you know, if somebody had a store on 10 feet back from the street, and then they have, and then they have 100 feet behind those, 50 feet behind the building, well, I'm kidding, but if they have 100 feet behind the building, then they could have their storage, their two different storage containers behind the building.
Yeah.
Because the building itself would probably Screen and 3. It might, it might be a workable solution.
I like the wording of it.
Totally, but I'm also, I just said, it might, I won't go back to
And it does
I think it's a good solution for TSB, would it actually help 1480? Because all the reasons that are there aren't actually related to any business.
Yeah, but what would help 1480
This I think, so yield trailers and other movable units, wouldn't that
That's pretty
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that
Oh, so this, so the licensed business related
Storage
Language doesn't only apply to
No, containers, yield trailers, comma, and other movable units, comma, provided such storage.
But what I'm asking is, does this introductory, these, these were licensed business related things, does it only apply to the storage container, does it also apply to the yield?
I think it applies
Right, I believe it does too. And when you, when it doesn't apply to all three, then you end up with, a good, TSB is a good example. Their business would have these two containers, like store back, digital balance, or whatever, they store in those, they would use to store in those containers. But if you look at 1480, where there's actually no real business, I guess, most
Certainly no, certainly no business related to that.
Or, or George, whose containers are, is a personal storage.
Really, 1480, and he doesn't got this from Moore too, so I get it for George. It's 12 different businesses, you're trying to find some stuff, and that, this, nothing we can hear is gonna change that. But I Building and backyard are different businesses. We got George, we got Doug, maybe all the two of them are different businesses, you know, five businesses. And five businesses inside
Well, I think, I think if Doug had, Doug had an office in that building
No, 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 it's still multi-business, that's the key.
Put this, put that, I wanna, I wanna see if this language can help Doug right now. But obviously Doug is gonna help George, but let's say it can help Doug, do it. If, if Lauren talks, so let's, let's just add it to the premise that says Lauren applies to the appropriate permit or whatever waiver or something, whatever that allows that building
Multi-use.
To be multi-use building under a one tenant, one business building. And so it has permission for seven businesses in there and can stop operating. And everybody else can also free relieve. Okay, that's done, let's say. Now we have Doug starting putting the parking truck back there. And maybe it's okay because Doug pays $50 a month to have a closet in that building that he calls his, 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 his own office, and now his business, truck is parked there, and that's a vehicle, yeah, well, a business
Well, if you actually need an office, like, if it's a multi-use, the landlord can do anything he wants, and then the others only. If he wants 10 trailers and 10 other companies
But that's a
But I don't think they'll like it, but licensed business related
It all boils down to that.
Yeah, yeah, so this is Okay, so it might, it might solve that if Lauren, if Doug got away with that. Maybe that was also where it came from, the business was there, and this could only be just business. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't solve the issue of, of having other man-made vehicles or storage containers.
Well, this, this would solve this. It doesn't, again, doesn't solve
It doesn't solve, no, Steve's putting together, it definitely, because it specifically says business related storage.
I think it's important.
And then lays out all the things you can store, but they have to be business related.
Right, so, so if, so if the person who has a parking business in that building wants to have a
Why don't we just take, I see what you're saying, all of that should come out.
Well
In the, apparently he saw
He's got a, here's a point I have, the licensed use is
I mean, the, the language is good, like, I, I prefer a lot of people, what could it be out? And that would make it probably all okay. But, but then you take it out, now you just said that you could have a place like that parking lot just full of
Is that, is it called screen?
Well, screen, yeah, yeah. But, but, but again, it's, it's not just that property, it's when everyone decides to, to, who asks about that, to have a 50 foot setback, what we're willing to agree on.
But the multi-use thing is, we tend on fights and deals with this. That's Fred Floyd, that was told, dude, you've got three different properties. You're not one property of people renting, you know, office space or storage rooms. And in your building, you've got three different properties, so you can't just combine or sign in a single sign. So if you can do that, if you realize that you've got a main hall and it's one landlord, and he wins, he's got the permits, he
Well, that building at 1480 has offices, the whole
Or it's an office.
They have
One has
Three businesses in there.
Right, but, but, but that's, that's
But that's a permitting issue, so you want to stay away from the discussion.
So the, the question about this language, which seems like it might actually be okay, like, because if you have somebody else's business, they could have, like, TSB
So would that TSB go to win on 1480?
Well, that, right, I don't, I think they're only on 1480 to the extent that
Okay, so what's the worst case scenario? Worst case scenario is that helps TSB, the way it's currently loaded, and they decide to also let Doug park behind their containers, which are screened from the road.
I mean, at TSB.
Yeah.
Well, you still, they're not permitted to be multi-use.
Oh.
That's the problem. That's the, that's, that's purpose.
That's why I'm saying, if you take out licensed business related, then TSB, 1480, anybody could store containers and yield trailers and other movable units provided such storage units are screened from view.
Right.
And, and I wouldn't mind that. Let's say, I went to Lauren, I said, you know, I, I'm building a house and I just need a container to store my glass blocks and my furniture and stuff. Can I just rent for six months a storage container and
Right, but it's, I think, I think my terrible problem has gotten used to that asphalt, working out, working heavily. And it's sort of okay, whatever happens there, it's with screening, I'm not sure I have water, I don't have this type of, way, way to walk across it, that's fine. It strikes me, I make that more clear, but anyway, people are more or less used to that, I sure are there, so fit there so long, calling others about now. But when we make this change, if different makers change, it's not just for that property, it's for
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I mean, it'd be nice if they weren't, if it's, maybe if they were to set back, it could be made of, of that, like screening.
Well, but it's
But it means the whole street could become that. I mean, right now, it is, it's, we have very some things here.
Okay, so if you drop down the street and all you see is trees and flora and fauna and, and yet it's a vibe, and it's a vibrant economic source of the community, how is that so terrible?
Well, because
If you really want to go to the beach, go to the beach.
Right, the Red Cross street is, from where we are, you can see out front, and I think it's a property actually for sale. And I believe it's for RV, that's not in that, it could, it could be it could end up with another big parking lot.
It could also end up as a, as a minimal. The fact is, it's trees now, and it looks boring now, but the owner still has the right to cut all those trees down and leave it crappy.
And it is a problem, it makes it more practical, wetlands.
True, but we're just, we're just, yeah, so if it applies to Gulf Road only
Right, but right now we have these protections on this, to have, to have certain types of businesses with certain types of with, with that arrangement, how they're supposed to be laid out, I guess, of course, although, preferably the building is closer to the front and stuck in the back. And if this were the, I mean, if we changed it to be sort of like an RV thing, in sense that if you have the RV, you can, or, if you can have a storage building attended to something else, then there would be sort of, like, if one was the same in the back. You know, you can have this, and they got, they have to pass that, and if, if we're able to pass that test, you know, Doug's activity, building
It's a somewhat of that, something very similar. One is, let's say it's not ten users, let's say Lauren wins the whole thing for Joe. This would allow them to have Joe's equipment in that
Yeah, yeah.
And we couldn't see
The way it's currently
So if he delivers it from Joe's, it's not enough.
Yeah, yeah.
The problem that he has again is, he's got, he's not permitted for ten businesses. If he wants 10 different businesses there, he's gotta go and do that. And they're probably gonna make a change to building
Well, that's why I was like, that's why it fits us.
Yeah, so I still think it's okay.
Same way, if they take all those trees down across the street, imagine, and they put a pottery studio on the bottom and a painter on the top, those are two separate businesses.
And, and if he gets a, gives a permit for multi-use, like a landlord, multi-tenant
That's a permitting
Yeah, it's permitting.
That's a permitting.
Also, that goes into some
I think what we're, we're trying to add to right now is, do we want these three words? If, if
I'm okay to take it off.
If we want, I'm okay to take them off, but if we want the whole paragraph as is, that potter studio and painter studio would only be allowed to store their business related items on the property.
Right, unless they go that other way.
Now, what if, what if that painter or potter wanted to, like, rent space to duck share?
Do that for multi-use.
Yeah, but
Remembered for that.
That's if we take out these three words, they would be allowed to do that. Rent a, a screened area, rent a parking spot. Because compassionate use, we need a, a septic pumper in town, nobody else would take them. Hey Doug, we've got a beautiful screed parking area, you can park in our lot. And that would put the truck right there behind a 50 foot setback, behind some trees. And yet we would still have a local septic pumping business, because if we take out those three words, those two businesses in that building are not restricted to storage related to their business.
I'm okay with this, to me, it seems like this is the kind of thing that can
You are, that's fine.
I deserve, I deserve, but I don't, I don't, I wanna, I wanna understand the impact. You wanna cross all of the, I'm not, I'm not, to say, always pretty much fine, I would just go and have it stopped. Ask like Lauren, ask to put up a, a screen, and pretty much leave it.
But, but like we can
The impact of, of making, making this change, what does that do across small town rural, but right now, that's, it isn't happening. You know, but, but when you open up the door to it, our community, local developers will realize, oh, yeah, I can like, that's the answer.
Well, I think that's the idea, I think it's hard to, they don't wanna be restricted to what kind of business
I think that's why they're trying out 2072 altogether. If, if we just made this change, for example, the point of any bar a long time ago, that the only, like, the only place that they only park their equipment, or instruction, instruction equipment is a high industrial place and housing, and now that's, I'm RBS and talking, who's in use? Would this actually allow people to park their dump trucks?
No, I don't think so. No, I think this is, I think it's a storage, and I think, you know, we, we've got the other suggestion in here that we need to create a light industrial zone.
Other people would do that.
That's a good problem.
Yeah, it's a, I, I do, I do like that, I'm more of a, I'm more of a You know, here it is.
We've, where's the lad?
For instance, right next to Doug.
You think he would be
Not longer now. His personal collection of about a million junk cars, which he's allowed to do, it's, and it's not a business, it's his personal junk. The same with, uh
Mac.
Like Mac on, on, uh
Yeah, Mac.
Benson?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's
Those CDRs were unenforceable.
Yeah, because it's his personal junk. Not like it's crazy, but true.
Well, unless it's a health issue, like if those trucks all over Mexico City or spilling oil or gas, then it doesn't help to park in a vault. But he bought that for CDRs value, and successfully.
I'm sorry, I guess, where's, that's just all the way up. I'm okay with your, with the Good, everything we do is, got it, it brings It's good. But, um, I, I, I think they're, you think they're basically okay, but we don't know, like, here's more, one of the other nine should we put this in? Yeah, I like that, or we should take the license
You were David, you were David, consent, uh, to put it, and ask them.
Well, we know about those three words, um, and we're in service to I would say we first should show up to David because he's not succeeding with the revised version, and ask him, and he has to see his role, it's my third
And, and so then let's go on to the second suggestion by Steve, what do you think about two, 200 square foot accessory buildings permitted anywhere in my daughter's home zones?
And the reason that this is in here is to realize, nice and cool, that we were talking about, I was talking about adding an extra accessory building. To the RV question, and it doesn't align, that's not the argument, the argument is to anyone, and pointing something to which is one of us. So that would be the argument.
So that would help any cottage industries?
A market economy, we have market economy argument now, we have, um, less pressure to have more storage craft everywhere.
Because people
Let any storages needed, because more people can now
I heard through his being pushed back on that, that there's a lot of people that say, oh, you put a steel container next to my house, I hate it. There's nothing you can do about it, visually, it's no aesthetic, uh, I'm not a town, no aesthetic, I go to a couple of beaches on the, or whatever.
Even this is a 200 square inch accessory building, that is not a container.
That is a 20, 20, 21
Is it a building?
Storage container off the back of the truck, you're gonna throw the round
Yeah, that's a
Storage container, I'm not supposed to lie to them. It's a building.
Yes, it's a building.
Because a lot of them have windows and doors in them, it's not
Well, exactly. If you have one on your property, you're permitted 10 by 10, 20 foot long. Okay, if you have two, but my neighbor, uh, I'm actually building permitted for that, not that bad, build a small country house, put a, put a Because the building itself is stronger than any other buildings. So they're not just worrying about it, so they have an easy
So it falls under the, you know, what is a building definition?
Right, so that's what the two hundred script was, you don't care what you did, you can't do a wall, you know, nobody ever falls down, nobody's living there.
And in the design guidelines, we could add, please screen from your neighbor's view. Because that's what you do.
Yeah, I mean, those are still issues about
They were already commercial, correct?
That would have to be the code.
You could add it exactly the same way you did, like, screen from view, but there's a less place to mirror, but, but, you know.
Well, take a, I'm doing parentheses, parentheses, what do you, parentheses, optional, licensed business with it, here, parentheses, optional, just so this is the key for, um, him to understand what, like, optional, um screening. Okay, here, so that's a note to help with communication. I have a little voice, a little voice, a little voice
Go ahead and break that. Okay, thank you. I needed that.
If you take, right, those three words, that all your community engagement have been less storage, if you take those three words out, you can have more storage And so that's why those two words are
Well, not, well, you want to store them in.
Yeah.
So she's already gonna keep them in and have it put up.
Because you could rent out to have
Well, I think, I think it was still, I think it was still in the building two for, for, uh, who said building two?
Not to exceed two.
Right, so these every, in these every business, if we were a business, either we're out there, it would be two, even if, two of these, either buildings or storage
Oh, no, I was talking about the other, the other
Oh, no, the, the, right, well, well, those three words, that also has, that paragraph also had, in the draft also has
Limited
Limited to up to two units.
Two units, and so one unit could not be a storage for, for storage, right? Right?
Well
They're all storage.
All of them would be stored. Of course, the, the proposal, I think, it would be more than two, but anyway, it was written, it was drafted
But if one storage for business and one storage for just junk, right?
No, both of them could be just junk, and it may have lots of words.
Yeah, that's why
In the end, if it works, both of them, we should do a
The business, that's why I feel, believe in the words in this report, because all our communications with taxpayers have been
Right, 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 it was on my, sorry, you're, I'm breaking right now.
I just, that's why I just felt like, you know, my, my understanding. Well, I, I, I hear you, and I appreciate that you've been steadfast on no more, um, storage If you, like, I was talking about tax regulations, and I was like, talking about tax, that, that, it was, I was just good, and it could, because we can stand, and remind me of what we can stand back there. It was not just me. Yeah, that's why I, I just disagree that all of the communications have said no more storage in it. Because clearly, some of the communications regarding to the community is that all of this work is trying to be restrictive on economic development.
That's it, that, I'm talking about tax.
Okay. Which is just as important as that.
It's just a very good point, and I thought what you were saying was that all community
No, I didn't, I'm sorry. No, I didn't, I'm sorry, it's received.
Okay, understood. So in your absence, Heidi is in favor of keeping the three words, because it keeps the storage, the two, limited to two storage units tied to the business on the lot.
So everything's active rather than dead. It's more active, like, if the business needs the storage, and get things happening, right? So that's good.
So we like to add your licensed business related, so.
Well, I, 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 they're often, so, yeah. We just got both options with.
Well, I think, again, it's more restrictive to have it in there, and I think it doesn't go the distance to solve the imminent problem we have right now. And that is the fourteen eighty situation with the containers for George's business and the truck for Doug's share's business and.
Right, well, probably, I, we're assuming we may have worked that.
Apparently. If you get a multi-use permit on the building.
Yeah.
But if we write the code that restricts it, then there's no incentive for Lauren to apply for multi-use permit.
No, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be incentive.
Because he can only put storage there for the one unit, the one business in the building.
Oh, I think, I think, I think it's, I think it's, I think the three words, I think, the, the, I think the three words, assuming that he, the three words, he doesn't work at a club at all. Because he can have these three units back there.
But only related to the one business in his building.
No, no, I take, if you take out the.
Oh, yeah, they have an incentive to try to get a permit that helps him.
Yeah.
Business, they, they, but if, if, if he's gotta do that anyway to help her, and help you, or in that, well, he would, then, if it's.
Ah, amazing.
Then Doug, we got the, we got the clock in the building.
Gotcha.
But at least it would be all considered, like, him getting the permit, the, the, for us, yeah, we have, we have heard before, that if he doesn't want to do that, that's up to him.
But it would work, yeah, it would.
Procedure or tactic, but, yeah, how do this? Continue, would be an argument for Lauren to say, okay, I hope we got this far, now it'll be a multi, uh, multi-use permit, so.
Yeah.
I just wonder if he just wants to watch his hand, he costs too much to do that, you know, and so we're all, and in our.
And what's the, why is he in business then?
He wants to sell.
So much to I hear from people, it's kind of like he's like, ready to just bolt, and maybe that's a fan field, I don't know.
Well, then he should, well, you know, then ultimately, he will sell that, that property.
Yeah.
And the, the next business owner.
Yeah.
Will have an opportunity, but I, he really turned my head on that, but keeping it in is an incentive for property owner to pro, apply for proper multi-use owner.
Could be, could be. Can I write that in here, what you did say? I think, no, I'll be all the close consideration of it.
Yeah, I'm just, for me, huh, because I wrote, I'm in favor of taking it out, but I wanted to write that, why I was in favor of taking it out, so I did, but then I really like what you said, so keeping it in is an incentive for the property owner.
One five one? I should have the page numbers.
Um, I unfortunately can't stay too much longer, I have a family coming from out of town.
I regret to be willing to make a motion, that'd be a.
I hope we had an hour, that's valuable.
Yeah, you may not have the need.
Send me that, ask Allison, they're cracking up some changes, which is just, wrapping stuff.
And I could go through it.
Go through, send it to me in a color or some way, for me, it's easiest to find it, or that change is whatever you like to do.
Okay, that's.
And when you do, probably, it has not, probably, Steve is gonna do it, or he's got all this all, and we'll try to get the document together, and regardless of what our, our new friends say about our economics stuff, we could be saving this to, to be thinking about it, you know.
Regardless of what they say about current practice wasted the last three years.
Yeah.
That's a little clever.
Yeah, you know, you did a good job, and sorry, apologies, apologies.
Don, hi, are you, are you jerking it?
Uh, second, the motion to a jury. You guys did a great job calming things down.
Worked very well.
Thank you.
It was all Tommy Bell this time, really inspiring.
I'm glad we did, it was much, much more enjoyable than the previous meeting.
Yeah.
And lots of good communication, you know, really good.